Committee is five o'clock on April 1st. This is not an April Fool's joke. We are having an actual meeting. Wouldn't that be nice?
We are recording. Laura just started the recording for Northern Berkshire Community Television.
Okay, great. We'll start with any public comments. If anybody has anything they'd like to bring to our attention now or open the meeting with. I can't see everybody on here. Raise a hand if you have anything to say throughout the meeting. You have any questions or anything and we will track it that way. I don't see anything right now. Move to the approval of minutes. We have minutes to review from both March 4th, 2021 and March 16th, 2021. Did everyone have a chance to review and are there any questions? Or points of discussion?
I reviewed them and I don't have anything that I need to discuss.
Same with me. I can make a motion to approve the minutes from the Clarksburg School Committee meetings dated March 4th, 2021 and March 16th, 2021.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the current financial statement for FY '21 unless there's any discussion?
If there's no discussion, I'll make a motion to approve the current financial statement for fiscal year '21.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Thank you. Principals report. Tara, if you are ready.
Hi, I am. Bear with me and my screen.
Has your power been good the rest of the day?
It has, but my internet is slow at home. I wish I were in my school building. So I can't see any of you because I don't have my dual screen action here in my home office. But can you just verbally say yes, you can see my screen?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. All right, here we go. I can see none of your facial reactions to any of this, so this is like me driving blind. All right, so here's my agenda for this evening. I'll start with just some really great news that we are returning all of our teaching staff to in-person teaching and learning starting on Monday. This is a big next step for us. We have all of our students back in person, full-time, full-day, K to 8, and now we'll have all of our teaching staff. Some of our teaching staff was remote in the beginning of the year. Thanks to the vaccination process that's been going on in the state for educators. We've made a lot of progress on staff being vaccinated due to this availability to us in schools, and that has helped to turn the corner on bringing some staff back into the classroom to teach. So I'm very excited about that news. That is late-breaking news that just came up this week. So we're going to not have to deal so much with Zoom hopefully moving forward. So that's good news. Some other updates on just teaching and learning for our school. First thing I'll start with is MCAS. Here's what we know right now about MCAS. Desi has has given us a window to test grades three through five between May 10th and June 11th. That's for ELA, math, and STE. STE is only for grade five, science, technology, and engineering. Grades three and four and five all have ELA and math. This will be different than it's been in past years, but we do, we are still as of right now in this moment being asked to administer MCAS in the spring. This could change, but so far this is what we have. We do not know a testing window yet for grades six through eight. The latest info we have is that that information will be shared soon. And for, what's changing that we know is that we'll have a shorter testing window. So last year, or in previous years, we didn't have anything last year. Previous years, we'd have two sessions. We would test over two days for each content area, and that's been shortened to one testing session for this year. So it's MCAS. I just want to also fill you in on our first full week of full in-person learning, which was very exciting. Having our junior high students be back in person for a full day. You know, previously they had been half-day in-person, half-day remote. There's a lot of outside time for especially recess and lunch for our junior high students. This is some classes sitting outside having lunch. They seemed to not even mind to sit on the pavement. This is when the weather was a little bit nicer than it is today. Last week when it was sunny and hitting 60. They really enjoyed that outside time, even though we don't have tents set up. They just sort of camped out in the driveway and had their lunch outside, had recess outside, and it was really great to have all students back in the building at the same time. We have, we bought some equipment for each class to have so they can have their own materials to play with and a bottle of hand sanitizer to go with so that, you know, as it gets nicer and they're outside, they're able to do some of the things that they enjoy doing in a careful and safe way. Everybody wears masks when they play anything, you know, at recess. They only take their masks off when they have mask breaks and they're making sure that they're six feet apart, but they do have an opportunity to actually play some games together and to be together in this way outside, which is really refreshing to even see sixth, seventh, and eighth graders really enjoying this time together. And there's learning that's happening for sure together. It's happening outside, it's happening inside. These are some seventh grade students reading a novel together outside. And, you know, we haven't moved to learning outside as much as we know we will once it gets more consistently warm and we can get some tents up, but we've been trying to figure out ways to take it outside when we can. So we just, this is late hot-off-the-press breaking news. We just have an approved calendar for the 21-22 school year. The teachers' union has to take a vote on our first day of school because by contract it's typically the Wednesday after Labor Day that we start, but they they decided this year to start earlier than the Wednesday after Labor Day, which is their contractual right. They are working with the superintendent and the other schools in the union to start on the same day as the other schools in our NBS union, which is August 25th for students. And I know there's lots of colors on here and these are always confusing calendars, but the first day of school for students is August, Wednesday, August 25th. The two days prior are professional development days for teachers. And this week is a week of half-days for students coming back, the Wednesday to the Thursday, the Friday of that first week. And so that'll be our start date. It puts us at an ending date of June 7th with some anticipated snow days. We add on snow days to the calendar as they happen. So that's what it's looking like right now, and I can get a calendar out as soon as it's approved by school committee tonight when I'm done. But I just, I do want to say, I know that this was, the teachers, again, coming back September 8th is what their contract says, and they were looking at coming back the week before Labor Day as a staff, but they really did want to work with the superintendent, with the schools that had set us a date of August 25th. Because we know that for related service providers, for specialists who work in multiple buildings, it makes it easier when we all have a similar start date for their schedules, and so they were attempting to work with their colleagues, work with administration in order to make that happen. So thank you to the teachers' union. I don't know if there's a question that popped up because I can't see anything, if there was something in the chat box, but.
John, did you want to speak? You're on mute.
Think I know that by now. Just want to say thank you to the teachers for considering the request from our office. We've been trying to work together with the four MBSU districts that are active and starting their school year on the same date with some flexibility because they all have different contracts about PD prior to that date, and we've tried to, you know, back in the pre-COVID days, do some professional development together. That's been successful and we hope that at some point we'll be able to do that again more effectively, but you know, I think, Terri, having a consistent start is very helpful to our related staff. We have multiple teachers who are shared between buildings, starting on different days really makes things challenging for them. This is a consistent start to the school year. And I think this is something that we mentioned we'd like to discuss in our next negotiation, but it's not there yet, so we appreciate the flexibility and the willingness of the teachers' union to work together with their other colleagues in the North Berkshire School Union schools to have a consistent start to our school year. And just appreciate that very much, and thanks to Principal Burns for also advocating for that as well.
Thank you. Moving right along here, just a couple of notes on safety. First, we'll talk about technology safety and then COVID safety. We have got a great director of IT in our union who's done tremendous work in his time with us, trying to just upgrade all of our security, all of our systems, internal structures around firewalls and safety for our internet safety as a whole union. And so he has developed a a policy around, you know, devices that are brought into our system that are not bought by us and how, you know, how we're using them and how we're regulating the use of them inside of our union. So just want to mention that he's done great work in this area to really tighten this piece up of our safety on the web. And with so much of our learning in the last year being through the internet, being through Zoom, all these platforms, it's more important than ever to have someone who's really looking at all of this and and tightening those places up for us. So I just want to mention that that is being rolled out to our staff on Friday by our IT director, Josh Rico, and that's just another layer of security to our whole package, so. It's web security. Now some physical safety. Just some updates. The first on COVID, the first four columns you saw last school committee meeting. And I just kept them in there just to show you some of the trends of what's happened in the past couple of weeks here. We've had, we had one case which this one right here turns into a zero now because it was a false positive, but at the time we reacted to a case here that put 25 students out on quarantine for exposure. Since that time last week, we have now changed this to a zero. And we've had two other students who have tested positive that have put about 25 students out on quarantine for exposure, and that includes their close contacts in the classroom and their siblings for a couple of days because we were being very precautious about waiting for negative tests in the classroom before we had siblings come back in. There's been a general uptick in our area with COVID, and so I think when we are moving slowly and carefully around all of these things, we're able to stay open and keep things safe. As you can see, you know, there's been no positive cases in our staff. There's been no staff quarantining for any travel, nor have there been any students recently quarantining for travel. That may change after spring break, I'm sure. And just the number of staff that we've had out for the last week has been, you know, strained as they quarantine to make sure that they test. I'll report that out of the cases that we've seen in the last week, there's been no exposure, there's been no transmission in the school. Everyone who's tested, who's been a close contact or described as a close contact has been negative. So everyone is cleared around those cases, which really, again, said it before, when we had a case before, I think it speaks to the safety protocols that are in place in the school. The diligence that teachers and all staff have around making sure students are in themselves are following the protocols of hand hygiene and mask wearing and distancing. It's really working in our school because of the the staff that we have and the families that we have that communicate with us regularly and keep us and work with us around all of these issues. So this is where we're at, and hopefully next month we'll see these numbers go down a little bit. We'll see some more zeros, I think, in these, some of these rows. And then finally, just a couple of final notes. I just wanted to report out, we had a very successful clam chowder fundraiser. Jim Callahan, in conjunction with the PTG, sold our famous award-winning chowder a couple of weeks ago. They raised $675 out of that event. It's hard to mass-produce a lot of chowder. It tastes delicious, but you know, it was it was something that both PTG and Mr. Callahan wanted to do to kind of get that out there, feed families, and to make some money to raise for our students. So all the way around, very successful. And finally, I think you'll probably need these enrollment numbers just for your conversation around school choice slots tonight, which I know is further down on the agenda, but this is where we're sitting right now in terms of enrollment. Just to help explain, well, one change, we're at 11 right here for kindergarten. Changed already today, so we have 11 residents. And that's still open. It still will remain open. We see a lot of people in town register all through the summer, so in terms of opening any slots for K, we always, or I think at this point it's recommended that we wait on that because we will see some more registrations come in. But we have, you know, here's our number of residents in each class, in each grade level, let me say. There are two classes at the grade four level for next year, and there are two classes at the grade eight level for next year. These are our famous bubble classes. Our school choice numbers in each grade level, and then here's our total as we sit right now. I'm making some adjustments in this column right here because I know of some people who are enrolled here that I'm not counting on necessarily here, who I know will be withdrawing potentially. So here's where we actually will be closer to as we move forward. So I just threw in a couple of recommendations in the last column based on where we sort of guide ourselves with numbers. We try to stay, you know, 16 to 18 students per class. Particularly in the younger grades, it's nicer to have the smaller classrooms when they're learning to read and they have a lot of needs and they're figuring out school still. We can afford to have a little bit of a bigger classroom when, you know, we get to fourth grade on up. Everybody likes to keep classrooms small, but we do have a little bit of wiggle room in some of our classes, particularly our bubbles where, you know, for both of these bubbles, we have 15 in each class. So these are our enrollment numbers right now. Wondering if you have any questions for me, and I'll stop sharing my screen so I can see your faces. That's always more helpful. Jen Maxine.
Tara, I just noticed that when the students were sitting on the roadway, it looks like there was a big pothole. Is that indeed a pothole?
Yeah. I love that you always.
Yeah, I'll send Rebecca a note on that. Thank you.
Okay.
I have a quick question on the school calendar, Tara.
Yes.
I noticed that there were two PD days for teacher in August and then one in November. Is that the final? Are they going to have any other opportunity for PD? Because that doesn't seem like a lot.
Yeah, so by contract, they have three full days of professional development. And we've typically done those days ahead of the school, the start for students. We're having the November 2nd day. That's the countywide day when there's offerings around the county for professional development, so we decided to put that in for November 2nd in line with what the other schools in the union are doing. We do have half-days built into the calendar. I don't know if it was showing on that calendar or not, but half-day early release times are good times for staff to be able to do professional development in the afternoon. So we will have, typically, we have about one a month scheduled in, except on a month that's, you know, maybe has a lot of other days off or something, but that's when we get a lot of that work in.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. Any other questions for me?
I don't have any questions, Tara. I just want to, you know, thank you and John and the rest of the staff just for, you know, through all these uncharted times, just thinking of the entire school and keeping everyone safe and making some really tough decisions, but necessary decisions, and, you know, keeping as many in school as we can at a time and just working to get us through and keep as many healthy and as happy as we can. So thank you. I know it's not been easy.
I very much appreciate your words because it's not easy for sure, and I think that, you know, if there's one thing to take away from all of this is that we have the best interest of children at the front of our decisions, and and I know that sometimes some decisions don't make all adults happy all the time, but we've played it conservative with, you know, making sure that, you know, we're doing a full quarantine or we're putting things in place that, you know, our definition of a close contact is a little bit more broad than, you know, like a CDC definition, but I think that all of those things, you know, you have to think about this in terms of there were schools all across the county who didn't come back in person. They had very difficult times with their teachers' unions because teachers and staff in school, you know, really had a lot of anxiety about feeling safe. And I think what our superintendent has done with policies has helped to, I think, make staff feel safe about working in our building. And that's a big deal because you want your staff to feel good about where they come to work, and you want them to feel that you are going a little bit extra than the bare minimum for their safety and for the student's safety too and families, but, you know, particularly particularly when you've got staff coming to school every day in an environment that, you know, from the very beginning was uncertain. I think we've shown that playing it this way in terms of being very cautious, looking at everything with a lot of detail and not, you know, not always feeling like an easy decision has been the best way to go. So thanks, Laura.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for Tara before we move on? All right, thanks, Tara. Superintendent's report. John, if you're ready?
Yes, most of my report would be, I would say, more during the four new business topics, but I have a few things. One thing to update that Tara said, kind of hot off the presses, as she mentioned earlier, there was a communication that came out today from Commissioner Rowley's office. He did that communication instead of having his usual weekly statewide superintendent call. And there was some interesting information in there. One, there were a few points about MCAS. Just to back up what Tara said, they did the language they said, I mean, just make sure I get it right. It said that MCAS, the MCAS window was extended to June 11th for all administrations of the assessment grades three through eight in high school. So basically, they had made the announcement a few weeks ago about having the grade three through five window be May 10th through June 11th. Now, it sounds like from what they said today, that that's being extended for all grade levels, so I would say, well, that's what we're going to plan for. And given that the federal government is not backing down and they need to give this assessment, I would say that's going to be, that will be given this year. Do I agree with it? No, but I don't think it's something that we need to stress about. I think we're going to do the best we can to have our kids take the assessment, use it as a another assessment. I know that the staff does a great job along with Principal Burns of giving assessments throughout the school year to see where our kids are at, and we're just going to use this to see where their strengths, where their challenges are, and use that to help and target our instruction for learning. There was also a comment and a statement in the communication today saying that students that are remote, that have opted out of in-person learning, will be given the opportunity to take the MCAS remotely, which is a big step. We've had more information to come on that, so as soon as we get more information, we will communicate that with the staff and with you as a school committee to keep you up to date and informed. The other issue, and it doesn't impact our school directly, but it does impact Clarksburg residents. He's making a recommendation, the commissioner, to the Department Board of Education for the state that MCAS for the class of 2022 not be a requirement because of the disruption in their learning over the last two years, gone two years now. So that's good for those students to take that stress off of them because last year sophomores obviously did not take MCAS at all. So they would still have the opportunity to take the MCAS to qualify for scholarships in other areas that would benefit them, but it will not be a requirement for their graduation as long as the state Board of Education votes for that. So just some mixed, you know, messages in there, good news, but I think it's just important to move forward with that. I know there's been a lot of discussion about advocacy, and I agree that there certainly would be a reason to pass on it again this year, but as long as, you know, the federal government's not giving the state permission to not take it, there's federal funds that are tied to it, so I would say that's not likely they're going to back off on it. It's been scaled back, as Tara said, quite a bit in terms of what's required. But that was the latest report on the MCAS. Also, just want to back up what Tara said and say, you know, thank you to the school committee, thank you to the teachers and administration for everybody's efforts this year. We've been in person since the start of the school year. That's because of the planning that we've done. We've met in this format, our admin team, since early March of last year. Now, Clarksburg was one of the first areas to be impacted by COVID, and I think there was great communication and collaboration between the select board, the school committee, town administrator Stone, and everybody in town just to do what was best for the community. There's been some recent cases, I guess, and I think that's something that we have to address in our next section, but I think the town is still working together to make sure we keep everybody safe and keep our school open. And that effort by the teachers to work with us, staff to work with the administration throughout the summer to be prepared for a reopening in September has paid off because, as Tara said, we don't have the the stress that some other districts have in terms of union issues because we work together. I think we've developed, I would certainly hope we've developed trust that if there's a question, we talk about it, we figure it out together, and we make a decision that's best for our students and our school. And the safety protocols that are put in place, you know, my job as an administrator, whether it was being a principal, dean of students, athletic director, and now superintendent, has always been the safety of the staff and the students is always my top priority, and it continues to be. It just looks a little different now because of COVID, but it still remains a top priority. And as Tara said, sometimes the adults don't always agree with the decision, but they're always made in the interest of everybody's health in the school and in the community to keep this virus out of our schools. And the data shows that we have not had any transmissions in school this year. Any positive cases that have been diagnosed were a result of some type of outside exposure, and we've moved quickly to mitigate that. I also want to give some, a lot of credit to our nurse, Laura Martel, who's done a great job. And that communication between the staff and even this week with some people having to be out just because of an exposure and staffing, everybody worked together to make it happen. You know, Kim Rougeau stepping in to helping the administration piece of it this week. Everybody just gives in and does what they have to do, make sacrifices to make sure that the kids are protected and educated. And so I say thank you to everybody for doing such a great job, and, you know, we came back last August, if everybody And so I say thank you to everybody for doing such a great job. And, you know, we came back last August, if everybody said to us, it's April 1st and you're still in person. We certainly would take that. And now our goal is to make sure we get to the last day of school in June. And thankfully, the weather has been great for the last, you know, month, month and a half or so with no more weather issues. And we even dodged today. It's supposed to be snowing and the sun's out. So I'm really happy about that. And looking forward to a good end of this, positive end to our school year. I guess I'll just, Laura, anything else can go in this next section of the COVID school update? Let me just keep going with that?
Yeah, go right ahead.
So last night we signed into a the Board of Health meeting. There was a little bit of confusion, I guess, if that was being conducted online. Myself, Jen Maxey, Tara Barnes, the town administrator was there, select board chair, Tammy Daniels was there, but there was no Board of House. So I guess there was some confusion. I heard later they were trying to meet in person, but the online portion didn't happen. And the reason why we were there was we wanted to do as we did back in the holiday season where we wrote a letter together to the community, just emphasizing the need to continue following the safety protocols that have been successful in our community. We're just concerned with the state recently, the governor last week changed his travel order to a travel advisory and we adjusted our travel policy in North Berkshire City to reflect that. Shortening the quarantine period from 14 days to 10 days if for out-of-state travel. The governor's new order, or new advisory, I should say, also said that if you travel for less than 24 hours out of the state, you don't have to quarantine. So we've added that to our policy. But we're still asking people to be cautious because travel is still not recommended and we want to make sure that people understand that. We all want to travel. We all want to do some things right now, but we're right in the middle of another uptick, upsurge in the cases locally and in many states. And it's important that we use some caution for another, at least another month or so while people are being vaccinated. Our staff has started to become vaccinated. I feel by the end of April, we should have a good portion of our staff at all of our NBSU schools fully vaccinated. I know I'm looking forward to get my second shot on Monday, so I will be fully vaccinated by later in the month. It's two weeks after your last, your second shot. So I think that's the message we're trying to get out to our families, to our staff, that, you know, now's not the time to let our guard down. We need to continue to be safe, continue to follow the safety protocols because A, we want to keep everybody healthy and safe and B, we want to keep our school open. So that's really important at this time. Especially that travel advisory last week was a little bit unexpected, so we changed to make sure we're being consistent with that. And we appreciate the effort by the school committee and administration to support that plan and communicate it out to the teachers and everybody in our community. Were there any questions about that update and the travel policy? Did anybody, the school committee or anybody have a question about that? You know, something within the commissioner's report today, also, there was a he communicated that field trips. I know there's been some discussion about field trips and he was encouraging field trips to still be done virtually, or I think similar to what we've tried to do at the school, try to do some more outdoor activities. You know, on our school grounds, over by the basketball courts. And I've seen, I've driven by and seen, seen Principal Barnes, seeing teachers, seeing students using that area. So we're trying to get the kids out more. We purchased tents, do some more outdoor learning. And we're just waiting for a little more guidance. We talked about maybe doing some local trips. We really want to see, make sure that this surge in cases quiets down before we commit to any of those types of activities because we kind of want to keep our kids safe, keep them in school and avoid any more interruptions to learning. Tara, did you want to add to that at all?
No, I think, you know, we, we've been discussing with eighth grade parents how to wrap up the end of the year. It's always a big celebration time for eighth grade students who, who move on. So we've been really starting those conversations about what that looks like. Again, it would like, likely be, well, it will be an outside ceremony, similar to what we did last year. We do have nature's classroom coming to us. Typically, we do a trip where we go to nature's classroom. But they've, they've adapted what they do to be able to, you know, still work with, with our students by coming out on site. They do learning activities outside, team building activities onsite. And we have a beautiful area around our school that we really we, it's, it's great to be able to take advantage of the space outside. And yes, we have been down to town field for our recess and lunches last week. We will continue to use the trails that are behind our school. I know that there's lots of groups who have tried to work with us to, to be able to develop them some more. So lots of things, lots of conversations in the works about end of year adaptations to what we normally do to make sure that we're being safe. And yet still trying to maintain some of the traditions and the ceremonies that we love to still have a part of our school culture.
Yes, we had a good conversation also about, you know, graduation ceremonies. I think the recent advisory we received indicated we should still go with an outdoor ceremony this year, scaled back in terms of how many people are allowed to be there, but a little expansion on last year, I believe. But I thought last year's was really well done, a lot of good planning by Principal Barnes and the staff. And it was a nice ceremony for the students. We also talked about, you know, maybe we have some kind of a barbecue for the grade eight on, and on the grounds. I mean, Jim does a great job preparing food. So some, we just talked about, we're using our, we're very fortunate where our school is. There's some wonderful outdoor areas, outdoor spaces to have events where we can control the safety, control who's there and keep our kids safe and our staff safe as well. I think we're in a good position to continue those conversations and try to have some end of the year activities that can, as Tara said, maintain our traditions and celebrate our grade eight students in a safe effective way to help them have a positive end of their experience in Clarkspur. But, you know, we do want to emphasize the fact that, you know, I think as was mentioned earlier, when we, when we have a situation where we do quarantine at the school because of a positive case that was diagnosed and perhaps have been in school for a limited amount of time. It's important that, you know, it's still families' right to do what they want once their kids get us home. You know, we always say that in school, it's our, that's our house. We're going to set the rules there. We're going to do our best for all 200 plus students and staff. We know the families are in, that's their job when they get home to set their own safety guidance, but it's really important that people take the quarantine guidelines seriously because that is how we mitigate the spread. You know, we, we've seen situations before where a student, staff, whoever may be in other schools have tested negative in that three to five day window after exposure, but the reason why we stay out for 14 days is because it has been shown that positive can show up later on in that 10 to eight to 10, 12 day window. So it still says, I know I saw a email talking about a negative test and it still says in the guidance that the safest precaution is to take 14 days in quarantine when you have been directly exposed to the virus. And the good news is the data shows that in school, the safety protocol is happening with wearing a mask, distancing, washing your hands. We improved our ventilation, as we know, we've discussed that many times. Using the outdoor learning spaces, everything that we're doing, sanitizing hands, that mitigates any spread in school. We haven't had any of that. We want to keep that in place. So my line to a few in a few discussions this week has been, I'd rather have a shorter quarantine period for a small amount of students rather than have a long quarantine for the whole school. So that's what we have to do to make sure our school stays open on a case-by-case basis. That's what we're going to continue to do and we'll continue to get updates from the medical experts and everybody else. You know, one bit of feedback we got this week, which I thought was really relevant, was both in Florida and Clarkspur, there was conversations with the public health nurse. And when she made her recommendation back to us, she said, what they tell us is a minimum requirement. I think her exact quote was, a superintendent can do what feels is best for the NBSU schools because schools can develop their own safety policies. And she said, yours have proven to be effective. You're, you've been open all year keeping your kids safe. So it was nice to get her support on that to say that what we are doing is, it goes beyond that minimum requirement. And that's us is, is what we want to do to keep our kids and our staff safe in school every day and through the end of the school year. And we also are, you know, because of those protocols, trying to develop a summer program that we are going to, you know, be keeping an eye on what the guidance is so we can have a, a summer program that will be headquartered in Clarkspur for our NBSU schools. And we're still working on plans for that, but again, I want to make sure we keep people safe and give our kids the opportunity to have some more learning time during the summer and also balance out with some fun activities that can be done outdoors during the summer months and help them stay connected with schools. But it's a good plan that we have in place and we're excited to welcome our summer program back. But again, then we'll rely on people staying safe, staying healthy and keeping the virus outside of the school. Any questions on any of that?
I was just going to ask, and I don't know if this is a question for you or Tara, just simply, do we have a date for graduation yet?
For Tara, no?
Yeah. It's, um, let me look at the calendar. It's the Friday before we let out, so June 11th.
Thank you. Eric and Cindy, are you good to move on?
Good to move on.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, Laura.
FY22 budget update?
January.
Oh, sure, have to. So we had two great meetings with the Clarkspur Finance Committee. They are moving our budget in total forward, which includes the funding of a pre-K. We had some really great productive conversations with the Finance Committee as well as Rebecca. So we thank them for their time and their support. So our next hurdle is town meeting and hopefully our budget will be passed and we can plan accordingly. You know, once the funds are actually approved at town meeting, we can move forward in advertising for the pre-K position. We are still talking to the library about space, but we do have a Plan B for space if for some reason that doesn't work out. I will say the library has been very cordial, very positive. So I'm hopeful that that conversation will continue to go in a positive manner. But Finance Committee was very supportive of the pre-K program and our overall budget. So that's now moving forward to town meeting.
Yeah, just to add to that, I know there was a question about, you know, the pre-K program and allocating extra funding that we requested for that program. There was discussion about, you know, possibly having a, be a separate item. And when I was asked about that, just so I wanted to assure the Finance Committee, our plan is to have a pre-K program in the, starting in August. We're obviously want to make sure that the town Finance Committee and Select Board support that. So we have to, it's nice to have the Jim Sticaneus and the Finance Committee was great with their questions and thorough approach to approving it. But our plan is, you know, we had some great conversations with the library, but our plan is to have a pre-K program. I know it's next on our agenda. Let me just jump right into that, Laura. Okay. So yeah, so we'll just say that, you know, the pre-K program, we are definitely going forward with that. We have a, another, we're going to attend the Library Trustee Meet. We've been invited to attend that next Tuesday to answer any questions. We've had some great conversations with Deb Buah and Linda Polly about the shared space. Jen last week had our architect that's done work at the school come in, look at the space and design a plan to have a shared space that would be secure, safe and secure during the school day. So we could make sure the library could remain open and this space would be separate and locked up. And it's based at the, still could be used by the library at, at times as well. So it would be a shared space. Kind of reminds me of my time at Brayton, where we shared the gymnasium where the school had it during the dead school day. And after the school day, it was, it was opened up so that the library could use the gym space. It's a similar concept of what we're trying to do here with the library and that'll help us. Just want to be clear again, the library's shared space is not going to be the pre-K classroom. It's going to be a area where we provide services to students so that we can utilize another classroom in the school for the pre-K program. As soon as we have the approval by the town during a town meeting in May, then we will move forward with hiring a kindergarten, a pre-K teacher, a pre-K assistant and anything else that's needed. We'll also start, Jen's ready to go getting those plans from the architect so we can start the work that needs to be done over the summer to prepare that space to be a shared learning space, as long as we get the final okay, obviously, from the library. And we're looking forward to meeting with them on Tuesday. But also, if for some reason it doesn't work immediately for this year, we have a Plan B that allows us to still have a pre-K without that space. Much better with the library space. And we're thankful for their communication and ability, willingness to work with us to collaborate on that plan. Any questions about the pre-K? Thank you.
Thank you. It's nice to finally see some positive forward movement. School choice? That something you want to, should we just move into a discussion? I mean, Tara briefly?
Yeah. Yeah, I think we could have some discussion, but I think Tara obviously did a good, great job of covering where our enrollments at. The one thing I would just one area, you know, looking at the numbers, say, that we talked about a little bit this morning. I would say that we should wait until May to do any kind of vote on school choice. I think we need to have, you know, get through the next month, have an idea of where we are at, starting off in May. And we've talked about it, we've set the tone now with opening that two-week window for school choice in the spring. So we could discuss that further after you've had a chance to digest this information and discuss in May how many slots we want to keep open. Want to make sure that we are not, you know, under these new COVID guidelines, that we have space in our rooms to put the kids in there safely. I know that, you know, one of the big changes too recently was that the Department of Education in Massachusetts went along with the CDC about saying that spacing, distancing in the classroom can be three to six feet because as long as everybody's following the guidelines, there is data that shows there's no spread. So we have done that. I know in the junior high school, especially in like a grade eight classroom where there's over 20 kids, we have to go down more towards three feet as opposed to six to keep everybody in the classroom in distance. But I think we want to really, as Tara mentioned, keep our class sizes whenever possible at, you know, 16 to 18. And then leave spaces for families moving into town. Because we know we have, I mean, a couple of years ago, we had the recommendation on PCG about, you know, 22 being average class size. Well, you go to 22, you know what's going to happen? That's the class that somebody's going to move into town and have children in that classroom. So now you're 23, 24. So we're trying to avoid those larger classrooms. What I want to be just a little bit cautious on is I know we have the double class. It's going to be in grade four next year with 27. We're projecting to lose a couple of kids. So, you know, I don't know if we want to add there or not. Like, I can understand the reason I had three because that would give us 15 in each classroom. But just, I think, further discussion, that would be good before we make that final decision. Tara, do you want to answer that?
Happens to all of us. Sorry about that. I was just pulling up our school choice policy document. We do, I mean, we just would have to amend our window for the spring. We typically open in April. And and what it says is that we, we don't leave those slots open past June 1st. So that was what we established last year. Was that, you know, this is what we usually do, but I think it's fine to wait until May to, to make decisions and still keep. I mean, maybe we want, we might want to think about the June 1st date or, or not, but we would just have to amend that a little bit. And then and then I just want to remind everybody, at the August school committing, committee meeting also is when we revisit opening choice slots for one more period of time that does not extend past August 20th. And we did make that window shorter, that August window to open it up at the beginning of August and close it August 20th because what we saw, I think it was two years ago, we had families moving into town in the summer. We had that open without, without an August 20th deadline. And we all of a sudden got hit in one classroom with a lot of, a lot of students at once. So the August, just to refresh everybody on, on what we've typically done. We've got that spring window. We close it by June 1st. We've got an August window that's a shorter amount of time. So so these, you know, we can also look at it just in August. That's another option as well. If you, if you want to be even more cautious with choice slots, I mean, you could forego opening anything now and waiting until August. That's just another option to put on the table. I mean, you could forego, um, opening anything now and waiting until August. That's just another option to put on the table.
Maybe we revisit that question itself in May, um, the next time we meet. I just, I wanted to clarify one thing quickly. On the, the enrollment numbers chart for grade two, it says seven residents and six choice, total 15. Is that in fact supposed to be 13?
Probably, I have to, let me, what grade level?
The grade level two, it says seven, six, and then 15 with one recommended school choice. I'm just thinking if it's lower, the recommendation may be
Yeah.
A little higher for school choice for that class.
So I think the total is supposed, is 15, so my numbers are off. Seven or six, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I just wanted to double check because that would potentially give us more slots to open if it was 13, so.
Right. Nope, 15 total.
Okay.
Yeah, I wouldn't mind some time to, just to digest what, um, you've given us today. I don't have a strong feeling either way or any issues really kindergarten. I do think maybe we should wait until the August, time to look at, just to see what develops over the summer since, like you said, we already had, uh, one more come in today than we thought from this morning. So, you know, you just don't know what's gonna happen. Um, I don't know, Eric and Cindy, how you feel about the other grades?
Jen has her hand up for a while.
Sorry, Jen, you didn't see that. Go ahead, Jen.
I just want to remind everyone that I have a school reporting requirement for school choice participation that's due June 1st. And what they require is an official vote date of the school committee. So while we can keep it fluid, I need to have a good 99.9% guesstimate so I can meet that reporting requirement.
So just to give them a date of when we're going to?
No, you need to vote it before June 1st. So I can fill out the report. If they ask for the date of the vote and the estimated number of seats you'll be opening.
So what about the August date?
Doesn't help my report.
Well, I mean, I would say that we could certainly make a decision on grades, uh, one through eight in May. And we could, uh, say that we're not gonna do kindergarten unless we know, um, because I would say we have 11 kindergarten students right now. I would be surprised if we don't get more residents in that grade level. Uh, we can discuss that further in May, but I think it's always, and I know I see Mrs. Howe on here, it's always better to have those younger groups, a smaller, um, number would be preferable with the kindergarten class to get them started, especially because those students did not have a pre-K program this year. There weren't many pre-K, there weren't pre-K programs offered around us, so I'm guessing that those students are not in a pre-K program this year. So to have them come into school, uh, for their first time under these conditions, you know, that they haven't had the, kids adapt and they're fine. They've been great with the math, they do it, especially the younger kids. They really, um, have been champs about this, but it's still their first experience in school. And I would say if we're gonna keep numbers lower in one class, that kindergarten is the one we want to keep them lower in. And by the way, just to clarify, pre-K is only gonna be for residents. There's no school choice in pre-K because we've had a lot of interest from residents and we don't have the space. I see Ms. Howe putting her thumb up and agreeing, so I do agree 100% that we should, I would just keep that kindergarten number, uh, for this year low and, um, accept school choice in there at this time.
I, I agree. I'm fine with that. Um, my only thought, and maybe we just would wait until they go to first grade to open a slot or so if it's still, if the numbers are still low. I just think typically, um, the most interest we get for school choice is in those earlier grades. Just because people, you know, want to go to Clarksburg and get the most out of it when they start earlier. So maybe we look at not opening in kindergarten and seeing where we're at for first grade and, you know, looking at it for that here to start. Um, I don't know how the others feel about that. And then I'd be fine to, Jen, if we move this to the May meeting to make a, to, to vote on these numbers. Would that help you then for your report?
I think the report is a little bit fluid, um, but we need to submit something close to what our plan is. You know, and they, they require a copy of the minutes. It's a little more in-depth than it used to be.
Uh, okay.
I think we'll have enough information to make that decision in May. Uh, we, our meeting is May, it's May 6th, so I think that shouldn't be any problem to, you know, make a, uh, educated, uh, guess about what we're gonna have for our, uh, I think our safety regulations are still gonna be in place. I don't see a lot of things changing with what our safety guidelines will be because, you know, the bottom line is when we come back to school in August, the staff will be all vaccinated. We hope they will be all choose to be vaccinated, but, um, students won't be. So we know that there's still going to be the need to make sure everybody is, um, safe and protected, so there will, will still be distancing there. Um, I'm sure there'll still be masks being worn. There'll be a lot of the safety precautions still in place, so we're out to make sure that we have plans that can get all of our students in a classroom. I'll give you an example, just because the conversation I had last week with, with Tara and, uh, and Kathy Howe in the kindergarten class, and we talked about, you know, could we combine that classroom back before end of the year? Get all of our kindergarten kids in one classroom because there's 19 kids there, and we know it's, I don't know if that's possible. We're gonna look at it, but, uh, that's a lot of kids having one classroom of five-year-olds. And, and, but, under the current guidelines, that's very challenging. So I think keeping those numbers down around 11, 12, whatever the number of residents are, um, like you said, Laura, I think we, then we open that kindergarten back up in first grade if we feel we have room the year after, when things hopefully will be even better. And we'll have even more idea what's gonna be happening long-term with the safety guidance.
Sounds good. Tara, what, um, is the number in a class that determines splitting the class? Is there a magic number?
That's, that's, that's a good question. Um, I mean,
We go along?
So historically speaking from my time at Clarksburg, it's been when we've been hitting, you know, 20, over, over 20 with residents for sure. And it depends on, you know, and usually we're talking about kindergarten when these discussions come up because, um, those are when those, the two classes that we have, that's when they split. I haven't, you know, in my time, haven't seen a class split, um, you know, just out of anything other than kindergarten. Um, so we've got a high number of kindergarten residents, um, who are enrolled and the numbers, I think the last time it was like, it was getting at 22, 23 kindergarteners. We knew we had siblings, um, who were, um, of, in a school choice family who also needed, who, who would have liked to be in kindergarten as well. And in, in the school choice law, um, you can have preference for siblings, um, in school choice if the siblings are already in, school choice into the school. So, um, we knew that we had enough to make another class out of the, the school choice siblings. So that kind of pushed it over the edge as well. Um, so yeah, if you've ever been in Kathy Howe's classroom, um, fitting 20, 20, 20-some, um, little people in there, you know, on a non-COVID day is, is, you know, is tough. Um, so we, those classrooms in that primary wing are just, I mean, we've got great sized rooms in the rest of the building, but the primary wing, you know, I, it, I'm sure Jen Maxi will give me a big thumbs up here. We wished we could have torn down a long time ago and redone because it's got, it's got lots of issues. Um, and one of them is just space. It's, there are smaller rooms that are not, not really great. So, so that makes it tough. That's my long-winded answer. And I apologize, I got kicked out because my internet is really bad here at home for some reason. So if I missed something, I'm sorry, I was trying to get back in.
Okay, so no magic number?
No, over 20, somewhere over 20, yeah.
Cause I'm, I was just looking at the numbers and, um, you know, Kathy's classroom this year, moving forward, if it has 19, I mean, that potentially even without school choice can hit the 20 mark. Then.
And I, and not to cut you off, but I think even with that class, at this point, we would, you know, as they get older, you know, to have a classroom of, of 20 is not unheard of or of 21. It's not, you know, a family. It's just particularly when they're in kindergarten, they're starting out. If we have the ability to, i- it's very situational, I think, um, with numbers and, and what we're looking at, um, to make a decision. And those are tough decisions, and there was a lot of parental input into those decisions as well. So, um, I'll just say, and, and, and I get it. That's, you know, we want to try to keep the, the classroom small, but having, um, you know, a classroom of 20 moving forward is not, not unheard of or not, we can do that.
Okay.
Yeah, I would say it's my goal order that we don't have any more bubble classrooms.
Yeah, no, that's, I agree.
Because we need all the space we can get in the room in the school for, um, various services. And that's important for us to do that. So we're gonna do everything we can, for example, not taking school choice in that kindergarten class moving forward because it's at 19 now, and if we get one or two more residents moving in, that's fine. We can, we can accommodate that. Even up to, and we have a class right now, grade five has 23, right? So, so that's why I was just saying with grade four, I wanted to just have some more discussion before we took the choice because if, if we were to, you know, we have several or multiple school choice in that grade right, right now. So I mean, not that we're looking to have huge classes because we know the learning is better in a classroom of 15, but we want to make sure that we are looking at all options before we make that decision.
The upcoming grade four, are you saying, John? Is that where you're?
Yeah, because I think, uh, they have 27. We're losing a couple of students, I believe, because of moves, um, out of town.
That's 27 with those included.
Right, I'm just saying that, right now it's currently 30, I believe, right Tara? But we're, we're losing three.
Right.
So before we replace those three, I'm just saying, let's have some discussion about that situation to make sure that like, so our grade, our current grade five class, which will be grade six next year, has 24, now going down to 23. So, you know, we, that's in one classroom. So we know that the line between having one class and a split class is, it really depends on how many residents there are early in their, I think, early in their educational career, as Tara mentioned. When they, when they have fourth grade classes in kindergarten, which is before my time, I know there was a lot of pressure because there was more than 20 residents in that class, and there was, you know, a desire to have that class split. I get it. So, but we just want to try to do all we can to avoid being in that situation because we need the space and having a double classroom in a grade level makes it more challenging to have the space we need in our current school footprint because we don't have a lot of room. We don't have a lot of space that we want to expand. We need those classrooms to be a, you know, a speech room or to be an OT and a PT room. So we need those rooms to have, um, those, we talked about the special education program we want to develop, you know, we, so we could use a classroom for that at some point. We need, but we don't have that classroom right now, so. By avoiding having a double class by taking too much school choice to push it most to an edge, you just want to, we want to try to avoid that, that's all.
No, I, I get that. My only thought with that class in particular is that either way you look at it, it's always gonna be a bubble class. Because, right? So even if we
Most likely, we don't usually lose kids. I mean, that's unusual, but we have the rule in place that if you are a family that moves out of town.
Right.
You can finish out the school year because we want, don't want to disrupt the learning of the child, but then they have to reapply for a school choice slot and it depends if there's one available or not. So we, we just, you know, if we have one, that's great. We'll, we'll make sure we do what's best and, uh, offer those spaces. I'm just saying that we want to make sure we look at each case on a case-by-case basis to make sure we're, we're doing what's best for all the kids in the classroom. That's all.
Sure. Eric and Cindy, do you have any other questions or comments about this? Um, otherwise we can table it until May.
I'm all set, Laura.
I'm okay with tabling it till May.
All right. Jen, that works for you. Okay. Thank you. That was a good preliminary discussion. Continuing business, building repairs and renovations. Jen, do you have any updates?
Yeah, sure. Um, so I've got a potful to add to our list. Um, Rebecca, I've already been emailing about that, so, um, that is on the list at Town Hall. I think in our last meeting, or it could have been a library meeting, I was given two charges. The first was to get an estimate for the glass for that long table in the library, um, shared service room, as we call it, uh, shared space. Um, so the quotes came in at around $400. So depending on how our meeting goes in April, um, we may be, uh, preparing that item and installing that. That will give us use of that full table, um, not only for us but for the library. They currently have a tablecloth on it, so I can see why they're sensitive to have people banging on it. So we're exploring, um, we've got prices for glass and plexiglass coating as well. Um, so that was task number one. And then task number two, um, was to do a walkthrough with the architect. So, uh, myself and Deb Buah met with Bruce Haake from Haake-Westall. Um, and we basically talked about what we could do to make this space shared, um, which includes closing up one side of the kitchen, opening up the other side so the library can have direct access to the kitchenette into the bathroom. Um, and then, uh, explore the possibility of installing what I call barn doors, so sliding doors that could be secured when school is in session. And then when we lock the other door, the library could open that section and use that for, um, afternoon or evening programming. Um, or even summer programming. And so the estimate for engineering is close to $5,000. That includes some mechanical pieces, um, as, I will classify them as mechanical, but, um, electrical, putting in some more outlets, putting in some more signage, uh, some more strobes. Um, and then the construction cost on the high end is close to $22,500. So with a contingency built in, we're looking at about 30 grand, um, to secure that space and make it shared. Most of that you have to remember is demo work and building a wall. And some mechanical aspect. When we put it out to bid, who knows where it's gonna come in at. So my thought process is, um, that when we receive our allocation for S R 3, we know we're gonna get some funding. We can use some of that money to pay, if not some, maybe a portion of it, apply it to this project. So what I'd like to do is get the approval from the library in writing, um, that these are the terms we agree to. And once we have that, I'd like permission from the school committee to officially hire Haake-Westall to do the design. I'd like to have that out to bid end of May, early June, um, so we can have a July 1st construction date. If I wait to town meeting, I'm gonna be a little bit behind if I wait to hire Haake-Westall. The delay is we haven't received our S R 3 allocations yet, so I'm kind of juggling some funds. Um, but I think we can make it work. But again, I can't do any more until we come to terms with the library. And, um, hopefully next week, we'll be able to do that. If not, I'll go to Plan B and we'll change gears.
Jen, are you finding that these prices are inflated right now because of COVID and everything that's going on? I know that the cost of materials and lumber and everything else is really
You also have to remember, this is a back of an envelope estimate. I really haven't procured Haake and Westall to do the job. So, um, they're very good to us and out of the kindness of heart, they ran some quantities for us. So this is a back of the envelope, um, estimate. We, you really don't know until you open the bids. Um, we've been finding things have been running higher. We've been finding that, um, material in some areas is hard to get. But until I open that envelope, I don't know. The good thing is that it's under $50,000, so the procurement regulations are a little bit different. So we really just have to attempt to solicit free bids and advertise accordingly where you know all this. But, you know, that gives us some choosing a little bit of who we want to work with in the sense of inviting people to come to the table. And we'll still have to post it in the central register and locally, that kind of stuff. But, you know, we've had very successful, uh, contracts with Tierney and Geary, um, Marizy Associates in, in this building. So I think we'll get people. I think people are hungry for work. I just can't predict right now, again, this is a back of the envelope estimate. But we do have money coming in S R 3. That's money that we didn't expect. It's, um, supposed to be significant and, you know, six figures, we were hoping. So I think that can help us offset this project. But again, you know, I maybe could get a tentative approval from the school committee that, you know, once we get everything in writing with the library, if it is indeed successful, I can just proceed forward. I certainly I can just proceed forward. I certainly don't want to hire someone if the, the, the project is not gonna come to light. So that's kind of where I'm at with the library.
Jen, can I just ask, I believe you mentioned this. I just wanted to make sure I heard this. That all includes security as well, right?
Sorry, my ninety-year-old mother's calling. Yes. Yes, that will include, you know, securing the, the spider, securing the doors. Sorry. There's a, you know, a question as to how we're gonna do the PA. It does not include a camera in that room. We don't have cameras in our rooms in general. We had talked about working with the library and the security system, but that ship has kind of sailed. So, you know, we would, we do have cameras in that hallway, but it's mostly wrapped around of how we can lock it down.
Perfect. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for Jen?
And just the reality with other projects at the school, you know, we've exhausted most of the debt exclusion. I have some money sitting in there for contingency. I've closed out most of the contracts. So I don't really have any big things scheduled. Depending on where SR three comes in, I'd really like to look at the front of the school. It's really, we have a frost heave there. And it, I trip over it every time I walk in or walk out, and I know it's there. So I, I'd really like to look at the front of the school as, as well as the drainage coming off the roof. But that can get expensive fast. So I have to map that out. But as far as summer projects, I don't really have a lot going on in Clarksville. We're hoping to host a summer program there, provided everything goes okay with COVID. So that's all I have. My focus is the library.
Yep. I was just gonna say that, that should be our focus. It's gonna do a lot of really good things for both buildings and you know, that's what we should focus on and take one step at a time, Jen.
So are you all okay with me once we get a written agreement? I mean, I would hope we would get a written agreement before we meet again. Are you okay with me proceeding with Haake-Westall once we have such an agreement with the library?
I'm okay with you proceeding once we have that agreement.
If I wait till May sixth, I'm gonna lose several weeks. And if we're gonna really open the doors nine-one, I can't afford to lose that kind of time.
Do you want to, do you want to vote for that, Jen, or just a, our word?
Okay, if it's just reflected in the meeting, in the minutes that.
Yeah. That would be good. I mean, we meet with the library next week. So if we can even guess, I mean, by the end of the week, fingers crossed, or early the following week, then that'll put you in good shape.
Yes. And again, I just don't want to spend any money on a project that's not gonna come to light.
No. Yeah. And then the bidding process takes a while, so. Any other questions, comments? I think that brings us to the end of our meeting. No executive session tonight, correct? It says none.
Laura, it looks like we have a non-residency agreement and a letter. I'm not sure if we need to be discussing that.
And Tara's raising her hand.
Okay. Where am I? I'm not seeing that. Go ahead.
I was raising my hand because I'm wondering if you could vote to approve our calendar for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year that that I, that we talked about tonight with a start date of August twenty-fifth for students.
Would someone like to make a motion? We didn't actually have any further discussion. I don't know if you have any comments or questions.
If the teachers are in agreement with it, I'm okay with that.
I agree.
So I'll make a motion to approve the school calendar for twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-two with students returning on August twenty-fifth.
All in favor?
Yes.
Thank you.
And in, and in regards to the non-residency letter, I was sharing that with you, I, I guess, just as a piece of, just as a, a, another layer of what we're doing, I, I think it plays into the school choice discussion a little bit, just that, you know, those letters are issued to any, any, any family that is, has moved out of the town of Clarksville during the school year and that we're aware of, so that we can maintain, you know, the knowledge of having residents and who needs to then apply for school choice because it gets tough. In consultation with our attorney this week, you know, this is a letter that has been used in other districts and just helps really with the boundaries around all of these discussions for, for residency and, and when you move out, you know, what the protocol is. So just wanted to put that on your radar and share that with you. But I don't think that there's any, anything to do with it, so to speak.
Thank you. All right. If there's nothing else at this time, I think we can adjourn the meeting at six seventeen PM. And we'll see you all in May. Happy Easter.